Mac. Okay, we're gonna go. You're good to go. All right, it is Thursday, December twenty ninth at six oh one, we're gonna call this meeting. If everyone would stand in the vacation.
Our dear father, we're grateful to be here today. We're grateful to be present with help and and we ask for guidance as we look at these monies from this grant that we may be able to use them appropriately and that we may get our water department running much better. And we pray that we'll be able to look at these figures and be able to read what we need to do to make our citizens a better water supply. Father, we're thankful for all the blessings they have given us. We're thankful for the life that we have and we enjoy and that we get our water from. Help us that we may be able to think wisely as we work tonight. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. I put that belief into why the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any announcements?
A reminder for the Fall Music Fest Gospel Music Festival in the park on Saturday then.
Eleven and nine thirty.
Sure.
Is there gonna be any anything but musicians like food, drinks, or any other kind of vendor?
There will be barbecue lunch, there's a bake sale, there's a cake walk. There's all kinds of arts and craft vendors.
Oh, okay.
And if we get anything. There's a raffle, there's. Fifty fifty grand. Oh, no opportunities.
Okay.
Fun day of family fun. Come and go, Jim, you don't have to pay the whole time. Just come whenever you want.
Much to be with.
We've got some good entertaining some art stuff of those naturally now.
Yes. Oh, really? Good. Okay, any other announcements? Citizens input, will you citizen input? Anybody? Rip?
No, I'm just. Roger. Mechanics.
No, I don't have it.
All right, moving on to number six, discussion and or take action on the American Rescue Fund amendments. Six A is discussion in our action to accept bids for the rehab for the actuators in the state of at the water treatment plant and we have with us today Jacob from, I mean Derek from Jacob and Martin and then Mike Stafford will be assisting in that. We had a meeting Wednesday to last week to accept the bid. And then this week we had some adjustments that was made to the bid. We can't, there's not a lot of adjustments you can make by law, so. Anyway, I guess the floor is here, Derek.
Good. Thank you, Mayor, with the council, Steve. Um, you have in your packet a little synopsis, there's a letter that I wrote, a recommendation letter that's kind of the formal part of the process. But I kind of did a little outline too that I'll go through that Mike can break it down a little better. And also hopefully you have a fit tab, but I'll go through it either way. We got one bidder and so I'll kind of talk about the implications of that, but I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time talking about things I think you may already know about, but I'm just kind of a quick rundown of what we're doing. You may or may not be fully aware of the situation at the plant that the the filters out there operate off. They have a series of valves that are required to operate them through different processes that they go through and right now those valves are operated or have been operated off a pneumatic or an air driven system that automatically fills the valve when to open and close. And that system is is not working properly anymore, really not working at all. The guys are having to go out there and manually to open and close these valves and that's pretty time consuming, especially since you have to monitor the the different levels in the filter to be able to know when to do this. So it's pretty much a full time operation. The plan with the bid was to come in and put in electric actuators, new ones to replace these old pneumatic actuators that weren't, which worked much better and are less prone to to breaking down and problems like that. The other part of it was the the actual control of the filter that tells these actuators, these solenoids for the pneumatic actuator when to operate is not no longer operational either and it's obsolete. So having it replaced or worked on is not possible. So another part of the bid was to come in and replace the panel that that operates those valves. And there are two panels out there that house the solenoids that work these. And so the plan was to replace these to put newer controls in both of these panels to control each bank of the filters, two filtered on each side, two on one side and one on the other currently. And then there was also some some items in for replacing some valves, the actual valves themselves, butterfly valves that are not operating, not closing properly. And then overall plant monitoring and recording of data and remote access. So currently the plant tracks different things in the plant like the the water quality and other things through old chart recorders, which are just little needle needle driven recorders that you then have to take once once you've gone through a period of time and summarize and put down on paper and then that has to be processed and sent to the TCQ they require. They also require the plants to be automated and current and so while you're you're kind of skirting the compliance aspect of that, it's it's very difficult and again time consuming to to make to meet what the TCQ requires. And so the the plant control aspect of the bid was to turn that to a digital recording system that would log it and then you could dump it onto a digital device like a thumb drive or for some external hard drive and send that directly to the TCQ. So it would eliminate that that problem. And also provide remote access so that if if someone is not on site, like in the freeze we had a couple of years ago. But but something needs to be done at the plant, they can do that without having to actually be physically there. And so those are kind of the critical items that we that that needed to be addressed and while we did the bid. We broke the bid down into into different items. We had a base bid and some alternates. The base bid basically took care of the actuator replacement part of that and the and the filter control panels, which I'm calling in the synopsis, the the local filter control, the best, that's kind of the out in the plan itself where you would access all of this. And then additive alternate A was adding plumbing and and valves that would allow you to put on the fourth filter, which is currently just it's not operational, it hasn't been put into to service since the plant was built. And so that would have given you the opportunity to put that filter on surface in service more easily. And all of these, by the way, we broke these out this way, which is pretty common, just to give the council flexibility and awarding the bid. And then alternate additive alternate B was replacing the valves that are faulty, I believe there were five of them. And that was one of the things that was considered a critical item. Alternate C was the plant, overall plant monitoring computer that I talked about that would give you that logging capability and also plan operation. And that was also one of the critical items. And so the total bid and I and if I go through this pretty fast, if you if you want to stop and feel free, but for all of those items added together, the total bid was three hundred and sixty one thousand two hundred and forty one dollars, which was considerably higher than what we had anticipated. The biggest part of that is is pretty obviously due to material price increases over the course of the last several months, prices for the kind of things we're looking after this have gone up at least twenty five percent and a lot of it, much more than that, some of it's doubled in price. So the pricing has gone up quite a bit. And we had some pricing that that we had that that Mike had gotten prior to the bid process. We were kind of using as a as kind of where where we're starting from. And going into a bid process like you have to maybe use the ARPA funds adds cost to it in and of itself, because you got bonding and different things that you have to do. So anyway, the prices were quite a bit higher. So in Texas, it is an option to negotiate with the low bidder. In this case, it's the sole bidder, so we're actually kind of lucky in that case as far as complying requirements, but you're limited to twenty five percent of the overall bid amount as far as what you can change, reduce or increase. And so but we have that flexibility. So we talked to the low bidder. We asked him to look at it and see if there were things that he saw that could be changed that would bring the price down. And we came back, as the mayor said, met earlier this week and discussed it with him. And he came up with a couple of things. Generally, the the items were these control panels that I talked about out in the plant. We had to, which would have independent controller, they've redundant and you'd be able to operate one without the other. One thing he suggested was was housing all the filter controls into one one panel. And so while that that might eliminate a little bit of redundancy with the plant computer and the overall controls, it really kind of offsets. So but taking that out was turned out to be a pretty significant savings in the thirty five thousand dollar range. And then making some changes to the software license that you would have to have through the plant control that we kind of talked through and still feel like you'd get get a very good system for the operators and and still be able to do everything you wanted to do and just reduce reducing that panel would allow them to reduce a seat in the licensing for the software. So that that was a pretty significant savings also. But those things and and some other really minor changes, material changes essentially offered a reduction of fifty three thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. And so if you take that off of that overall bid that I that three hundred and sixty one thousand, that would bring it down to three hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and twenty six. And that would get the valve actuator replacement, the the valve replacements and the overall plant monitoring and control aspect of it, which were the critical items that we thought you really needed in order to stay in compliance, eliminate the twenty four hour manpower requirement that most types of things. And so if you choose to, that's that's the recommendation we made was to award it based on that reduction for the three oh seven. I think that's, you know, your ARPA money obviously in total is more than that, it's still a little more than what we had originally anticipated, but it's it's much better than the the original bid.
And and just to reiterate, this is not something that, you know, we're just wanting or wanting to do or whatever. This is something that TCQ is just basically mandating. This is the requirements. Most cities are already on the SCADA system and also that twenty five percent or seventy two thousand is something that you you can, the seventy two thousand goes either way, either up or down. And if you go beyond that, then you've got to put it back out for bid. Jacob and Martin has nothing to do with the repairs that are gonna, these upgrades that are gonna go on. They're just the the engineering firm that examined the water plant and determined what it was that we needed. And.
And they will be also overseeing.
Well, they'll be overseeing, yeah, but they don't actually do that. I just want to make sure everybody understands that he's not up here selling his own company's work.
Yeah, we're not.
The bid was put out, what they do is go back and write the bid up and put the bid out and they're the ones that collects the bids and everything. And then we come back and sit down and go through. Unfortunately, we only had one that bid dedicated control out of Gainesville. And they're really, if we had to pick one, probably that would probably be the one we would have picked any.
The mayor and I, oh, there were several looking. There were a handful, there were at least five or six, and I talked to many of them. Some of them were looking at it up till the last minute and while they wouldn't, you know, they're not gonna give me a prize if they're not invited, but they were all, they will kind of, you know, you can glean some things and and they were gonna be, they weren't gonna be any lower. And but but there were others looking at it. And dedicated is a qualified contractor that has done work for us on our job as well as the city.
So there were others. Did we get any kind of feedback of why they didn't bid?
Mainly it's because they they had too much other work going and that's what you'll see. This is not unusual, by the way. I should have mentioned that upfront. The last, since the first of the year and maybe a little bit before, one bidder is a pretty common outcome. And that's the reason.
They're more more expensive on the smaller projects.
Yeah.
This is a very small project.
Right, for the grand scheme of things, this is, this is very tiny and most contractors want to go after the ten, twenty million dollar project, so.
And and there's a lot of it out there and when they're having to deal with with suppliers that won't hold prices for more than a couple of weeks or a month, which is, you know, unusual compared to, you know, historically what it's been. It's just not worth their time. So but I think, you know, I was confident that what we were seeing wasn't, you know, putting it out for bid definitely would not garner anything. I think that we have had a couple and and I've been doing this twenty five years and it's never happened in that time for me, but I've had two this year, we had no good. So you know, if you get a qualified bidder and you don't feel like the pricing is is gonna change, then that's why our recommendations.
And this includes three of the four filters?
Yes, sir.
And what's our minimum? We've got to have the three right now, right?
Yes, we are. I thought we were running two. Well, we run on to it at times, but with the third one being down, should one of the others go down, there you go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So they they bid the fourth one, we're we're just not gonna do it, correct?
Right, we're gonna hold off.
Funding is there.
No.
No, I mean, not there.
Well, we don't have enough. That's that's why we came back and we we massaged the number and everything, yeah. We just, there's just not enough money to do it all. And and so we came in, massaged the number and the actual company is gonna be doing the the upgrades. He sat with us and he gave us some ideas of what, you know, what he could move around and maybe not do or whatever. And we had to stay within a seventy two thousand dollar window. So it was just, it was just not, we're gonna have to do it eventually and I guess we'll have to do it through another grant or something. But we're just, we just can't do it right now. It's just too much.
We're gonna do the other things that are on this list.
Right, no, I know there's other things are way more, I mean, we can get by this fourth filter. We can get by for a while on that where it's not something critical. It's it's never been up. So as as we grow and bring more residential or commercial water on them, then we'll eventually have to do the four, but we can get by for a few years.
I would say four to five years.
Yeah.
So I mean, I would have liked to have done it, but it's just something that right now.
We're looking at what we're doing here. Of course, we never know, but how long would we be expecting before we had to upgrade again?
Three or four years.
Before we had to upgrade again.
Well, what we're doing now, we won't have to do that again for another ten, twelve years, like what we just went through. It's been fourteen years since it was built. Here we are, now we're having to replace all these things. So as far as what you're talking about, ten to fifteen years in that area. As far as needing the other filter due to population growth, I would say about four to five years.
Yeah, and and the water department has held their own. They're they're, we're making excellent water. It's just, it's all manual. They have to, I mean, you could even, you have to actually go up there and just see, there's no notification at all of anything that goes down or or the the coronation is too high, too low, whatever.
So it's.
So it's labor intensive. So and this will give a once this is all installed, if something is off in the plant, it will first initiate a text message to one or two different cell phones and it will also give us the ability to to use a cellphone, a laptop, computer, or whatever to make the adjustments without having to come in. Just takes just a few minutes to make the adjustments and then you're good to go.
Right, I can respond without having to actually be here. That's not saying I wouldn't be on my way.
Right, yeah.
But should there be a weather event like so did and it's hard to get here, at least I have the ability to go, okay, I got a problem, I need to close this valve, open that valve, I need to do these things and I can start working on that.
We was able to see that, you know, back in snow, but we we were constantly monitoring the the level of the water tower. And then we recall, if I recall, I know I'm a hundred percent right here. We had the south tower that we really couldn't get an accurate reading.
We couldn't see.
It was the the sensor was frozen and we had to go down there and manually do it if I'm not mistaken.
Now, I know how much water in the north tower equates to a full bowl on the south tower. So because I have, I I have that knowledge, I go, okay, if I get to beat in the north tower, I know I have to beat the south tower.
Yeah.
But we couldn't see it. So we were just going off my training.
So we didn't really get with snow, it would have been a lot easier with this system in place here. You know, despite, we were the only ones up during that time.
Well, to your point, if we do these things, a snowbit can happen again and I will have the ability to solve, prevent the crisis or at least stall the crisis and not allow the town to run out of water. So. Let's take it.
And just so everybody knows, this this filter four quote fifty whatever thousand was, that's to get all the packing and controls in place, but that is not media. And the media is probably another. Probably another, I'm gonna say another fifty thousand.
Right, which is why that makes sense. We're just gonna do it right now and do all the piping and those.
So we're talking that we're gonna need down the road another hundred thousand to be able to do that. Some of the plans for to bring up the four online. But but.
But with this.
We have right around the corner, another very important thing for the water plant that we're gonna have to do a rehab, build around here in some place now, yeah.
Right.
So this is our best for right now. And then we need to start planning ahead.
That's what we're trying to do because let's see the road we're gonna.
Okay, any other questions or comments, concerns? Anybody? The chair would entertain a motion to accept the bid for the rehab actuators in the state of the water treatment plant.
I make a motion that we accept the bid for item six A for the rehab of the actuators in the state of the water plant.
Now, Kevin first.
I'm second.
Yeah, I'm second, all in favor.
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Meyer.
Pam Reed.
Chris Burkett.
It is unanimous. Derek, thank you for you coming out.
Thank you.
You made such a a long trip for a twenty minute.
I'm so excited to be here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. This was very, very important. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Take care, but drop safe going home.
Okay, take care.
Moving on to six B, discussion interaction bid for dewatering dumpster for the wastewater treatment plant. This is another item that's requested, required by TCQ. They they understand, they've been very generous and given us some time to get this thing down. This dewatering dumpster, what we commonly call around here a sludge dumpster. The company, we we went around a many company to find one, we found the best price, but they would not give us more than a twenty four hour quote. So we couldn't get a quote, we got a quote.
This afternoon, I waited.
Yeah, the one we got today and you'll see it on on the Dragon Products.
They changed it in seven days.
They did. Oh, they did, so good.
Yeah, because I still have the old ones on my desk and it came down in price, I think a few thousand dollars.
Okay.
But it said twenty four hour quote.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we've been dealing with. So the reason we're doing it today, we're the reason why we're we're contemplating deliberating is if we can get this thing passed here to jump. Hang on, yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's still a briefing.
She was asking why I just cut off. She was kind of.
I tried to say that on one.
I understand.
He goes to computer class next.
Yeah, yeah. The reason that we're doing this this evening is because of the, you know, the short bid notice that we've got, but we wanted to see if we can get this approved or not, we're gonna order it tomorrow.
Yes.
And it'll be, what's the bleed time on it, you know?
He said since we're a city, he'll start building it tomorrow. So I did ask him as far as because it requires some upfront and the rest on delivery, I asked him if we pay for it upfront. Does that benefit us in any way? He said, oh, yeah, it'll get out of the door pretty quick.
Like with two weeks, four weeks, two.
A couple of weeks.
Okay. This will also, among other things, if there's some benefits to sewer plan with, it is also the one of the missing links for us doing the septic dumpage in our sewer plant. So it's 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 multi positive benefit and it's something that we really need to do. So we, Michael, is he making any questions about it? Is the the bid pretty open and and.
The one that I gave you all that doesn't have anything on it, I can't remember who it was from, Aqua Time or something. Theirs was in the fifty seven thousand range.
Aqua Zine. Aqua Zine fifty seven.
That's that's with the polymer dosage conjecture.
Right, yeah.
Well, I told Eagle Labs what I'm gonna do is use like the pumps I have at the water plant for my chemicals. I'm just gonna pay twelve hundred dollars for a pump and order a polymer.
So that's something, I mean, there's.
So I try to save money.
There's a step that goes with this that that requires some chemical, but Michael, Public Works is gonna set that up ourselves.
We'll say.
Rather than buy a thirty thousand dollar setup, you know, as you've seen listed there. This company doesn't even offer that side of, they actually make the tank, he's going directly to the people. These people don't make the tanks, they sell. They quite honestly couldn't possibly.
Okay, so so Michael, I have a question.
Sure.
With the sludge tank, we're doing the chemicals, is it gonna end up like the water company, water plant where you have to go out there every twenty four hours and check it?
No. No, this is different. So basically when I waste, and some of this is gonna sound boring, but when I pull sludge off the plant, it's gonna go to this box. And I'm gonna buy a pump that's going to inject the polymer that injects it at a steady rate, it will never change. It's only gonna, it's only gonna run when I turn it on. So it's not gonna run all the time.
Okay, so it's, every so often you go out there, you inject it.
Every day.
Every day.
For about forty five minutes. And that's it.
So it's not labor intensive, right?
No.
It's just, here it is.
So it also takes away from the need of having drying those, which are super labor intensive. The guys have to get in the sludge, shovel off the sludge. So that's.
I know exactly what you're talking about. I have a I have experience with that from one of my cousins.
Forty five minutes every day. Do I get to say we put up some kind of automated unit?
Well, basically you go out there and you know, but pump starts pumping, it sends all this sludge water to the sludge ponds. It pulls the RAS off of it and leaves the sludge. So when you pull that water back off of it, it's full of aerobic, very healthy microbes that it sends right back to the plant. So it's constantly feeding the plant when I run it. I've been buying six bags of dog food a month, so this'll, let's talk to that.
But it it'll be something that'll just be into the routine of the daily.
Yeah.
Check, because yes, they have to go down there and spend a couple of hours.
Every day.
Every day.
Any other questions or comments, turns on any of it? Anybody? The chairman entertained a motion on six B, discussion or take action for the watering dumpster for the wastewater treatment plant.
I make a motion that we accept the bid for six B for the dewatering dumpster for the wastewater plant around Dragon Products.
Chris second, all in favor.
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Meyer.
Pam Reed.
Chris Burkett.
It is unanimous. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for getting that together for your sister.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, so tomorrow we'll we'll get it ordered, get it, and that'll get us both through one day. Moving on, it is six twenty nine. Item number seven, adjourned meeting to executive session. If we can you, can you pause it?
We can.
You gonna let it go? Okay, muted.
They won't let us stop it. Now it's just a stamp out, we can't, so we don't have to.